Okay, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the high school board of District 86 to order.
Yes.
Yes.
And maybe we'll wait one second. We have two board members in transit. And if everybody will join me in our traditional saying to pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Ms. Debbie, when you're ready, introduce the votes, please.
Dr. Skoda.
Present.
Mr. Corcoran.
Here.
Mr. Cusini.
Here.
Mrs. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn. Ms. Manley.
Here.
Mrs. Plantson.
Here.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to close session for a very short time and we're going to be back right at 7:30. And if it's not right at 7:30, it'll be a few minutes after, but you're not going to have to wait much more than a half hour. And we're going into closed session for the purpose of discussing concerning salaries for one or more classes of employers. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees. And and individual students in special education programs. And other matters related to individual students. Can I have such a motion?
So, second.
So moved by Mr. Cusini, second by Mrs. Manley. Everybody can stay here and enjoy themselves and we will get back. Oh yeah, we have to take a vote? That's always good. Thank you.
Dr. Skoda.
Ah, yes.
Ms. Manley.
Yeah.
Aye. Mr. Cusini.
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran.
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn. Mrs. Gallo.
Aye.
Mrs. Plantson.
Aye.
We've been in session about 7:33 and we have an awful lot of good news here tonight. It keeps coming in on Dr. Law. Take it away. Yes, you can have your agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Skoda. To start us off, Dr. Copeland, if you would introduce your fabulous swimmers.
Thank you, Dr. Law. We have a couple of individuals to recognize tonight as well as a team. And a few that will wait until future board meetings to bring in tonight. As many people may know, we had a successful weekend two weeks ago with our forensics team. But tonight we'll be honoring our most recent state championship with boys swimming. In addition to individual state place finishers at the IHSA State Wrestling Tournament. So I would like to, at this time, introduce again to all of us our athletic director, Mr. Dan Jones. We'll say a few words and recognize our teams. And then introduce our coaches to say a few things about our swim team and introduce the coaches. Thanks, Dan.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you again for having me. This has been a banner year, more than, I guess in more ways than one. We'd like to first recognize our wrestling team and our wrestlers. I'd like Coach Hayes and Matt and Juwan to come up, please. The wrestling team competed over the state tournament, a three-day weekend. Started off with regionals and then sectionals. And then those qualifiers moved on to the state. And as I mentioned, come on over. As I mentioned, the state meet is a grueling three-day tournament. And without further ado and taking anything away from Coach Hayes, I'd like to introduce our head coach, Jason Hayes.
Thank you very much. First off, just like to thanks for all the support and help throughout the year. It's great to see these kids go out and wrestle hard and compete hard. What these guys do day in and day out, the dedication to the sport of wrestling is they're very passionate about the sport, which makes them successful, I think. It's not just showing up at the practice for two hours and doing the work for two hours when we have the structured practice. It's the little things that go on outside the room, before practice, after practice. And just to get on the podium down at the state tournament is a great accomplishment for these young men. And we're very proud of them, especially for their work ethic that they've done. First, we have Matt Allen here. He finished his junior season at 44 and 4. He had a great tournament. He beat a guy who he lost to during the year to get into the state final match. And he showed some growth and improvement as the season went on and he ended up getting in the state finals and was a heavyweight runner-up. Also, he has just committed to Michigan State to play football, so he'll be joining his brother, Jack and Brian also at Michigan State University. So all three Allen's will be playing football there, so. Next, we have Juwan Edmund, also a star on the football field. Was a starting tailback this season. Juwan had a remarkable career here at Hinsdale Central. He was all-state all four years, which is pretty remarkable. He was on the podium every single year. He took fifth, second, third, and third. And, you know, he lost in the first round this year. We had a little discussion back in the hallway. He could have quit. He could have gave up. But he showed a lot of heart, a lot of pride, and digging deep and passion. And I told him, you know, college coaches look at this stuff. They look at the wrestle backs and see how you perform. And he did a fabulous job coming back all the way and getting a third-place medal. Juwan finished his career with 160 career wins as a red double. So, coming up after spring break, he's going to start looking around what he's going to do as far as competing at the next level as being a student athlete collegiately. So, thank you for all the help and support.
Once again, congratulations to the wrestling team and Coach Hayes, who now has, I think, five years in a row have had wrestler that's been an all-state wrestler. So congratulations to him and his program. Next, I'd like to bring up the boys swim team. Guys, why don't you come in. Coach Barber. Our swim team, the boys, they decided this year they were going to go 4-4 during the regular season. They decided they weren't going to win any invitationals during the regular season. Let everybody else get those regular season medals. Then they decided, okay, we'll win conference, but we'll take second at sectionals. Just so no one's looking for us at the state meet. And then on Friday night at the state meet, they dominated. And then kept that domination going on Saturday in one of the most exciting finishes to a state tournament. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce our new coach, who's not new to the school, as he's a graduate. And not new to the program, as he's been coaching for many, many years, Coach Bob Barber.
It's a day about those guys. Without a doubt, thank you for all the support and thank you for everyone that made it to those nice hot swim meets in the pool. As Coach Jones made us sound so successful, I would have to say it's an interesting sport that requires a lot of patience. Because what these guys went through, there's quite a few of them here. There's actually 12 that got to compete at state for us. Let me take this off. I'd like to introduce them all and kind of give them a little spiel. I'm going to start with my freshman over here holding my trophy. I have Billy Leader. Billy's a great addition to the program and probably the reason why we could have these goals coming in the door. We knew we could win this. I didn't think we told anybody about that. But Billy was a big part of that once we had that confidence. So, congratulations on scoring as a freshman. Piling that second place in the Valley Leader this year. Next, I have my sophomore. Where are you at there? Franco Reyes. Franco is a currently owns eight medals out of eight potential medals at the state meet, plus two trophy medals. So he's up to 10. We'd like to see that grow as the years progress. Franco swam an incredible time in pretty much every race he swam. But I think the one that stands out the most would be his 100 butterfly, where he's less than a second away from the state record as a sophomore. So he did a phenomenal job for us and throughout the year. Congratulations, Franco Reyes. My other sophomore, William Bowwater. Will is definitely an integral part to our team's success. He is someone nobody wants to look out for because they're always wondering what he's capable of doing at the end. And we saw that come out of him in such great fashion when he swam his 200 freestyle at a time that we didn't think he was ready to do. And I think he gained more and more confidence through both of these years and we can't wait to see two more years out of him. So we're excited for William Bowwater. Next, I'm looking at my junior that's here today, Michael Dietrich. Michael, we weren't sure where to place Michael. We weren't sure what state lineup we were going to put together at conference. And Michael took one for the team to make sure we could win. And once we figured out our state lineup, Michael got a second opportunity. And between those two weeks, Michael got two seconds faster, almost 1.7 seconds to qualify for state as an individual. And shocked us all, I think himself included. And went a time that he knew he was capable of and really just kind of set us up. Just kind of got our emotion really high, knowing that we could pull it off the next week. So he kind of set us up one week early. So it's been a great season. Congratulations, Michael Dietrich. And then I have four seniors represented here today. The first one I start with is Clark Groszans. Clark, if you step forward for a second. Clark is, just so we're all here, he was here in the fall. He's got his own state championship title from soccer as well, so he's a dual state champion somehow. Congratulations on that. Next, I have Elliot Arnold. Elliot is one of my two divers that came up and qualified for state this year. So, we had 12 total guys qualify and Elliot, we couldn't get half of our gold medals without our diving program. But it's definitely always fun to watch you dive and we're going to miss you for the years. Thank you very much. Kid who Portland, he's not here. Kid who PQ, we'll do P squared. Next, I have Adam Pearson. Adam, as far as I'm concerned, carried his team on his back on Friday and Saturday of state. Put himself in a position where not only did he have to swim the longest distances, he swam both the 200 and 500 and the two free relays. But he ended up taking second place in the 200, or 500, and then placed in the 200. Second place in the 200 free relay, fourth place in the 400 free relay. And probably accumulated what looked to be about 70% of our point total with the accompaniment of the relays. And I think his confidence and strength is a real big reason why we stand in front of you today. So we're very fortunate to have him, Adam Pearson. And the last one here that I have here today with us is Brian Powell. And I'd like to point out, for Brian's sake, this whole effort was a team effort. If you look at these guys standing up here with all their medals clinked and you can barely hear me talking. We had 15 potential opportunities to score on Friday. We walked out on Saturday with 10. And I think that Brian is a perfect example of why this was all team. Brian came in, three relays, scored top six in all three relays, got 13th in his individual. But ultimately was the person that we could always lean on and showed so much leadership and confidence. And he's a big reason why we're here. So, thank you for your time and congratulations. Thank you for all the support.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next we have Ms. Palmer. And in whatever order compared to what the agenda says, Steph, you just do what you
Okay, super. We are super proud of three individuals from Hinsdale South. And tonight, we have Katie Tosh, our activities director, who's going to tout their accomplishments and sing their praises. If any of you saw the media coverage of our wonderful celebratory assembly last week, we did a great job of celebrating them with our entire student body. So, without further ado, Katie.
Thank you. My name is Katie Tosh and I'm an English teacher and I'm also the director of student activities here at South. I'm feeling for our athletic director, Kim Maloney, who could not be here today. So I'm going to try to be loud and boisterous, like I knew she would be if she were here. First and foremost, it's my honor to present to you Hinsdale South state champion in wrestling, Josh King. Josh King took first place in every tournament he entered this season. He finished the season with 68 takedowns to his opponent's four. He finished with 27 pins and racked up a whopping 180 points this season. While Josh was winning match after match, his opponents only scored a total of 25 points against him all season long. Josh finished the year with two pins, one major decision, and one decision in his four-match run to his first state title. With a final season record of 45 to 1, Josh now holds the record for most season wins in Hinsdale South history. Ladies and gentlemen, Josh King. It's also my pleasure tonight to introduce another highly accomplished Hinsdale South athlete. Junior Maddie Nowak accomplished something that has never been done before at Hinsdale South. Maddie placed in the top five in the state on three different events. The uneven bars, the vault, and the all-around. This makes Maddie the most decorated female gymnast to ever come through Hinsdale South gymnastics. On a side note, I had Maddie two years ago in my freshman honors English class and she's just as top-notch in English as she is in athletics. So please join me congratulating Maddie. And finally, I'm here tonight on behalf of our journalism department. On March 2nd, the Illinois Journalism Education Association came to South to bestow prestigious honor on one of our students. Senior Ashley Young was selected as the Illinois Journalist of the Year. She will now go on to represent Illinois as one of 50 statewide journalists of the year. A national winner will be chosen at the Journalism Education Association's annual spring conference in Denver, Colorado in April. Ashley is heavily involved with three journalism programs at South. She is the editor-in-chief of Vespa, our yearbook. She is our advertising and web editor for The Stinger, which is our newspaper. And she's a founding member and executive producer of HSTV Buzz, which is our multimedia club. You should also get used to hearing Ashley's name because she is an activities rock star. She is going to be receiving a couple more accolades later this year for her performance at the IHSA State Speech Competition, as well as her performance at the Business Professionals of America State Competition. Next year, she'll be attending the University of Missouri. Oh no, we're out. And will be studying journalism. And finally, I would be remiss if I didn't give service to her awesome activity sponsors. Jim Kelly couldn't be here today. Liz Newman's in the back. Katie Aquino is back there as well. And also Megan Parker and Richard Sasso. These five have been instrumental in shaping Ashley into the journalist she is today. So please join me in congratulating Ashley.
Katie, Ashley will be attending what university?
University of Missouri.
Oh, that's very good for journalism.
Yes, she's a rock star.
Dan Jones, before you leave, I don't think you said that we broke the record for state championships and all that. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. In 1998-99, St. Charles, before they were east and north, there was just one St. Charles school, had six IHSA state championships, which has been a state record since then. Interesting side note on that, at the time, I was coaching in that conference, the Upstate Conference. I remember sitting in the locker room after they won the boys' state baseball title, were sixth. And I remember turning to one of my coaches and saying, "That record is never going to be broken." And of course, my words have now come to fruition and we have broken it. And we now have seven. The last, we had five, of course, in the fall. And then, I wouldn't name them all, but I know I'll forget something. And then, the two that we did this winter, we introduced the boys' swim team. And then we're bringing in the state speech team, otherwise known as our forensics team next month. So, we got to stand at seven and we're very humbled and honored to have that state record.
And there might be a few more in the spring.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for let the athletes clear out. We're all very proud of you. Okay, we're going to have audience comments in three minutes. And it looks like we have two have signed up. Mike Chalky of Hinsdale. Welcome to the microphone.
Good evening. I'd like to address two points tonight. One for Dr. Law and one for Mr. Maniscalco. Dr. Law, one of the things that's a little bit concerning, I did read the agenda coming in. A lot of community members are pretty disappointed that it looks like we're going forward with the approval of the $10,000 for the newsletter, unless I read it incorrectly. It's a little disappointing in that, from some perspective, it looks like a taxpayer communication to discredit teachers and the union. We're wondering why we need a $10,000 rapid advisory referendum when there's lots of data out there on polls and things that are free. Or the option of talking to community members. I think many of us are suspicious that it's a little bit of a dog whistle issue to the ultra-conservative anti-teacher base. And I wonder, for those who are really pushing this advisory referendum, if you guys think the state educationism is so broken, perhaps you guys would take a run at state office and try to fix Springfield in Springfield, not try to fix Springfield from our school district. Last week, or last meeting, the word disingenuous was used when Jennifer Plantson questioned why we were spending $10,000 on our newsletter when we're in the financial straits. And I believe that term was used. And I think what's kind of disingenuous is the fact that we're putting this referendum out, it's advisory, it's not something that we can act on when there's other things we could be spending the money on. What would $10,000 buy in our district? How many laptops? 20,000 books? What else could we spend on that money? I think it's a little disappointing that we're going forward with it. I would like that noted from the community. One final question for Mr. Maniscalco, and I apologize in advance, I can't stay. I have some kid pickup issues tonight. I think everyone can appreciate that from time to time. There's a big debate in our community is, what do our average teachers make? And it's been going around since I've been involved, and I hear high numbers and low numbers. And you've put together a staff plan and it seems pretty easy to extend the math out to say, this is the number of teachers we have, this is our payroll. Take benefits out, because benefits are not salary. Take out the additional salary for what people make in additional activities. And then we'll have our average salary. And I think the community could quit bickering with each other as to what they actually make. It would seem a pretty easy mathematical formula to figure out. And I don't know why we're still debating that. Is it 90,000? Is it 120? I mean, what is the real number? So, you have your staff plan, you have a budget. Is it a simple division? Or how can we get at that number so the community could quit being polarized about what we actually pay our teachers? And again, I apologize, I won't be around for the answer. Thank you.
George Logan.
I would like to make a proposal to the board for their acceptance to develop and implement a plan that will convince the majority of D-86 homeowners that Hinsdale High School is one of the best public investments they can make. How do we do that? Two facets. A communication program that will inform the homeowners of the big challenges that District 86 faces and the progress they're making on each of those. A focused agenda. Second, a focused agenda that demonstrates to the homeowners that the board, the teachers, the administration, the support staff, all spend the taxpayers' money very carefully and judiciously by reducing waste, increasing productivity, while continually improving the education of our students. And they need to see that and see regular demonstrations of it. Now, why do we want to do this? D-86 needs money. We need it for capital expenditures and we're going to need it for operating costs. And we have only our homeowners to finance it. Or to underwrite our school at the bank or at the bond company. The state is broke and our students cannot rely on Springfield for any help. District 86 homeowners are going to be an even more important part of our students' future than they are now. And they are very important now. Let's take a quick look at the District 86 state aid. Take a quick look at the numbers from Springfield. 77 million for property taxes, 19 million for state aid. But then you have to take a second look at the state aid. 16 million of that 19 million goes directly to the teachers' retirement system. We never see the money. And as Dr. Law said tonight, we're not sure they're passing it off down there. District 86 has no control over that 16 million. That leaves us with 3 million for District 86. Dr. Skoda and Dr. Law has advised in several meetings back that 1.7 million of this could disappear with Senate Bill 16, which passed the Senate and which could pass the House when it comes up. So now we have 1.3 million out of 19 million for District 86. That's hardly fair. Take a minute to look at District 86's financial picture from a homeowner's vantage point. The homeowners in District 86 pay 17 million in property taxes to fund most of our operating costs for the school every year. Then they pay a large state income tax, of which the state sends back a very small part refund to fund the District 86 Teachers Retirement Fund. 16 million of that goes to them. That's $42,000 per teacher for fiscal year 2014.
George, we kind of hit time. We hit time. Your three minutes is up.
Can I get the permission of everybody to take one more minute?
I don't think we can do that, George. But anyway, thank you. Okay, President's Report. As we've read in the paper, that currently the district is in negotiations with the SEIU, which is the union representing our building and grounds people. And in the absence of information, a lot of times misinformation gets legs of its own. So I have a prepared statement representing the district's position. It will be posted tomorrow morning on our website. Here we go. For anyone who has ever been involved in labor negotiations, and especially for those whose livelihoods are subject to the outcome of those negotiations, it is a time of frustration for all involved, even for those who are just watching from the sidelines. Misinformation, often unintended as such, begins to fill a vacuum and such misinformation is currently making the rounds as the district has begun to negotiate an initial contract with the SEIU for the district's building and grounds employees. The misinformation goes from hinting that a hit list exists of staff who will be terminated to the even more ludicrous notion that henceforth parents will be having to wash their uniforms of their athlete children. Neither of these rumors bear a grain of truth. We recognize the positive impact that Building and Grounds apartment makes to our schools. We value the contribution of the employees of Building and Grounds, like all of our staff, in allowing us to achieve our educational mission. The administration and our legal counsel continue to eagerly work towards and resolve the terms of agreement that is fair to all sides. We are early in this process. We have not yet received, but look forward to receiving, the SEIU proposal outlining compensation and benefits. We are developing a brand-new contract together and await their proposal on compensation and benefits. Four bargaining sessions have been held since late January, when negotiations began. We had hoped that we would have completed our fifth session last week, but the SEIU, the representative of the Building and Grounds staff, asked that we move that previously-scheduled March 5th session to the end of March. The board and union teams are currently working first on the standard provisions common to school bargaining contracts. Such as definition of terms, union management rights, grievance procedure. All language and working condition proposals have been exchanged. The administration's previously discussed desire to have Building and Grounds under the supervision of a district the supervision of a district-wide Building and Grounds supervisor is not subject to these negotiations. The reporting structure and future skills needed for supervisors are being analyzed by the administration as our schools become more technical and costs increase. Any ultimate decision on supervisory restructuring that impacts the working condition or wages of the B and G employees can be negotiated at the request of the union. Perhaps the most important aspect of the exercise is the administration performing a cost and quality comparison of outsourced costs versus in-house. No final determination has been made on the approach. To obtain that comparison, under arcane state law provisions, the district must give notice to all parties and to the public of the bidding process. In addition, compiling wage and benefit comparisons with other districts' custodial, maintenance, and grounds employees is underway. It is the fiduciary responsibility of the administration to bring to the board comparable wage structures and market information for use in negotiations, as will the SEIU from their perspective. Again, we have not yet received, but look forward to receiving, the SEIU proposal outlining compensation and benefits. It is our intention to have a contract ratified by the start of the fiscal year, July 1. And as I said, that will be available on our website. Just one other comment from the President's Report on what's going on with the master facilities plan upgrade, or refresh, I should say. The functional teams are currently meeting, and almost all the functional teams have met at least once and are on schedule. The real updates will come after the functional teams start reporting to the steering committee, and those meetings will be posted and open to the public. So I understand we're on course to meeting our timeline. And I think that's pretty much it. And we go over to the insurance committee with Mrs. Gallo and Mrs. Planson, who had an insurance committee meeting. Okay?
The report is attached. The only, we have one addendum, and our next insurance committee meeting is April 21st at 4 o'clock in the upper room at Hinsdale South Library. Thank you.
And those that are open to public?
Yes, they are.
I have a quick question, Kay. So, on that, we, you had the first meeting. What are the committee mandates? I mean, I know we have a structure for the administration to be there, the HHSDA, the insurance brokers. Can you clarify what the main objectives of this committee are?
Well, the board has not given the insurance committee any mandates. What we are running under is trying to analyze the reports from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and working with the staff to do key performance indicators for right now. So, if the board, I would like the board to give us mandates, so we have something that we can work towards. One of the first things we had said was, as you can see in the report, my, the last statement I, we made in the report was, we can work collaboratively and find ways to reduce insurance costs to the employees and to District 86.
One of the, I'm not in the position to mandate anything as an individual board member. One of the things I'd like to see addressed would be a wellness program for the employees, and not just a wellness scare.
That was being discussed.
On there? Okay, great.
Yeah, and my main reason for bringing it up is not necessarily, it's not a critique of the committee, it's really the board whenever, whenever we've had, even for the finance committee, we're not gonna agree unless we have mandates for the board, you know, from the board to review items. So, I think we should, we should try to refine what the mandates are for this committee, and, you know, whether or not it's, you know, the objective, of course, is lower cost for both the employees and the district. But at some point in time, we have to really look at whether or not it's this committee or another group would be the percent increase, you know, benchmarking ourselves against other school districts, as well as what the taxpayers have. So, I think we need to, we need to start looking at that, because right now we have, we have like a $1 million increase in our insurance cost year over year to the district. And right now, our average, I think our average participation in terms of the amount that employees pay is 15%. So we should be looking at that, you know, far in advance. And that's, that's kind of, that's one item. The other thing is, we had this $1 million increase. What is the reason for the increase? And how do we, how do we affect that to not have anything that's outside of what our budgeted amount is for insurance spending?
And, Kay, when I was on at the broker, like Horton would come and have some ideas about, you know, win-win for both sides, how, while we can get better care at less money. Is Horton bringing any of those ideas forward?
Yes, of course they are. We're analyzing, we just got our first month's worth of data from Horton through. So, just having one month's of data doesn't really give us that much, but it's being compiled. We're, Jeff is wonderful, he's walking us through the reports so we can understand them, so we can then focus on those things.
Okay. Thank you, Kay and Jennifer, for doing that. Mrs. Manley, are we ready for the policy committee?
Well, this is the second reading, and whatever changes were brought up last time, Dr. Law, to who he had made. I did notice, as I'm reading this agenda, that 7290 does not have a link to it. Number 11.
That's because there's, well, if you click on, you click on Policy Committee.
Cover page.
The link.
Oh, on policy.
7290 is not a policy that we currently have, so it's not, it's not an existing board policy. It's brand new. So there's no link to our existing policy for 7290.
Okay, that answers my question. Are there any further comments on these? Other, well, there's no, it's recommended action is second reading, it's not up for both of us, so it would be second reading.
And so, as we, as we said, if there's no discussion, no revisions, nothing to send back to the policy committee or administration, then we can bring it back to the next board reading for approval, because there's no further discussion.
I do have discussion on policy 4150. I know Ms. Planson brought it up at the last meeting, and I want to just reconfirm that, because I agree with Ms. Planson, that the processes that are listed in here should really go into a procedure book, not, it should not be part of the policy. Because then if these processes, processes need to change, then we need to change the policy. And I think that really will tie our administrators' hands. So I would like to see that these nine processes be put into a procedure manual that I'm sure the business office has. And then just a generic statement of, please follow the procedures, you know, please follow the process in the procedures manual.
This is part of an ongoing dialogue we've had as we continue to move policy forward as to what constitutes policy and what constitutes procedure. So it's drafted as it drafted, as it is drafted. So I need to hear back from the rest of the group. I think I've heard pretty clearly from Mrs. Gallo and Mrs. Planson as to how they see things. I believe this should be placed in policy. And, how about you?
What I agree is, I agree with you about, Claudia, about it should be in policy, because then, then it's, it's there and it's irrefutable and it can't be changed by the staff. I also, I also would concur about the need to have this in a procedural approach in the, in the business office, so that they can hand, they can hand certain rules that they're supposed to be following for purchasing or whatever it might be, different standards. But I think that would be part and parcel to what, what Bill would want to do in terms of how is he gonna implement that into the, into the schools. And that's really, I think, for the administration to figure that, figure out themselves, and not for us to tell them how to do it. So, I do, I do agree with the point that these things should be implemented at, down at the, at the operating level. But we're, we're a different type of entity. Normally, you'd have a policy and procedures manual in the private sector inherits policy, so we're, we're not, we're not implementing a policy and procedure manuals as a board.
Bruce, don't you have a procedures manual?
Yeah, and as, as we are going through policies, adopting policies, changing policies, then we're, we're writing procedures along the way, so that we have procedures that match board policy, and then it's accessible to people and can refer to. And we need to make sure we're doing things right in policy.
So do you have a procedures, a procedure component like this, isn't it?
We don't have a, no, we don't have a procedure like what is described in 4150, the policy, yet, but when it's adopted, at some point, we'll have to have a procedure written, so that people in the buildings, that we are all doing the same thing.
Who puts your procedures manual together?
Well, it depends on, on the policy. You know, for example, we're, we're dealing with policies and having to do it, students and medication in the buildings. Well, Tammy would be responsible for that.
But something like this, who would put this?
Oh, this, this would be Bill.
So Bill, do you see this being in the procedures manual?
Personally, I like to keep my policy and procedures separate. While they are certainly in one document in corporate world, they are a separate section in the procedural world, so that as each individual building operates, you can adapt things that are specific to your building.
So then in all this, in this process, what you, what I'm reading from you is it should be in your procedures manual?
If I get a vote, yes.
Thank you. A wise man once told me, the difference between policy and procedure is that if it's really important, you put it in policy, and if you don't really care what happened with it, it goes in procedure. And I think that's been alluded to already. And from a board perspective, if it's important that these procedures be implemented the way we want here, it should be policy. On the other hand, if the board feels there should be a great deal of leeway on how this is implemented, then it should be a procedure. So I really think it boils down to how important the board feels the issue is. Because procedures can be changed without the board ever knowing about it. Policies can't.
But we employ these individuals, so if we don't like something that the procedures manual has, then we will change it.
But, no.
We're elected to have them change.
No, we're not up to writing a procedure for that. Policy, that is how we govern the district.
But this isn't, this isn't, this isn't a policy, is what you have written here, is not a policy.
Okay, well, I disagree.
It's a procedure. It says process. Process is procedure.
I guess I gotta read in this ridiculous, the, I, let me ask Claudia, is, I'm kind of, I was not aware of this issue, but I'm kind of a press guy. What, does press have this capital improvement process in its recommended form?
No, it does not. However, I can't even get the current version of this on my computer, so, but it does not.
It does not?
This is something that was put in place, because I believe staff has been asked for this repeatedly, and it has not been followed.
All right, well, you know, it's, it's, from my point of view, it's our job to oversee the administration, and whether it's in, if it's something that we think is important, whether it's in policy or it's in a procedure manual, we just have to make sure it gets done. So I don't, I don't, I mean, this is not a hill to die on. If you, you make a cross-reference in here to, I think that you referenced, Kay, to the capital improvement process, you, you, this is form over substance, in my opinion. So I really don't, this is not, this is not something I really, well.
Okay, so I think it'll come back at our next meeting, and we will have a formal vote. Okay, Dr. Law, we are ready for the administration report, starting off with the D-86 newsletter expenditure.
I think, Dr. Skoda, I don't think it needs much introduction.
And, and, like I said, the, the board has seen the prototype of what is gonna go on, and I think any citizen who sees this would be very proud of our schools, and shows our kids have a great light, and, and if you were buying a home and you saw it as newsletter, I think it would make you more likely wanna buy a home in this district.
I have just a couple substantive pieces. Under the state titles, you have others top finishes. You have HC girls, HS boys. Do you think you could make that Hinsdale Central, Hinsdale South, so it's clear versus, so that people, people may not know that HC stands for Hinsdale Central, and they may think HS is, I don't know, high school or something like that? You know, just a clarification point.
Or maybe say central or south?
Yeah, or south, yeah, whatever is, will work. You know, you know, I think it is a great newsletter. I do think it highlights the positive things going on in this district, these kids. I appreciate that it's focused on students. You know, but again, unfortunately, I will not be voting in favor of it because of a timing issue, quite honestly. I think it needs to go into the budget for next year, and I would support it at that point. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I know that Dr. Law struck a good balance with this, because I've gotten crap from both sides, that they don't like it, so I'll vote for it.
What I would like to, to see on a going, I've kind of cut silent on this, but on a going-forward basis, it seems that everybody agrees that this is something that should happen. And since this is a message from the board and not the district, the superintendent, the principals, I'd like to see a board committee appointed with two or three members to put out the board message. And it's a suggestion to our president, because I don't have authority to do that. So, it's just a suggestion on a going-forward basis.
And what happens when, what happens when the full board doesn't like what the committee had two or three do?
Well, that's where you would probably, the committee would probably come here first and get ideas from all seven members, and then they'll have to cull it down as best they can. So, I know other, other boards do approach it in that manner.
Okay. And in the interest of full disclosure, I think Mr. Considi will vouch that I didn't give any crap from either side. Thank you.
I, I do, I do wanna make mention that, that overall, with a district of our size, where we have, you know, nearing $100 million of revenue, we should have a routine general communication to our, to our entire taxpayer base, and I think that this is a start, and then how we do that, whether it's a committee or however it's done, we should be doing that. We should particularly have an issue after our audit comes out, so that our financial results in detail, not just a one small paragraph. It should be at least several pages of information on the financial aspects of our, of our, from our audit plus historical financials. And I, and I think the other, the other areas would be academic performance, and, you know, I think the timing of these would be, be triggered with whatever the natural timing is with the release. But we, we have a $100 million institution, and the people that are paying for it overall aren't getting directly communicated with. So I think we could do a better job with that in the next, as Jennifer said, with the next budget cycle, put that in, so that there's no debate about, about this. And I, I do think that, you know, this, we've spent enough time on this, we should just move ahead with it.
Yeah, just last point, and this goes without saying, but to Dr. Law, I noticed it says the motion is not to exceed 10,003, and then from my point of view, I would ask you to do whatever possible to minimize the cost.
Absolutely. I'm also in favor of mailers, but unfortunately, us being over budget, this is something that does not affect our students, so I would not be, I will not be voted in favor of this.
All right, I move to approve this.
Now, do you want to approve it, taking away the, so your motion is not to exceed?
So just as it's written.
Okay. So why don't you read it?
Motion to approve.
I have a clarifying question. So we're gonna, if space allows, we're going to either write Hinsdale Central, Hinsdale South, or?
South Central.
South Central in that space?
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve the creation of a newsletter to be mailed to residents in District 86 zip codes in an amount next to exceed $10,300.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Moved by Mr. Cassini, seconded by Mr. Corcoran.
Now, I have some questions. First off, Dr. Law, did any board member have any input in this newsletter? Besides, you know, not for substance?
No, apart from the email that was circulated indicating a change was recommended and incorporated and that, no.
Good, thank you. My points were that this became a catalyst, this came, bubbled up to the top because we wanted to communicate to those taxpayers who are not, who do not read newspapers and that they do not have computer access. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. I think the part of it was that there are people who are paying attention to schools because they have children, they get our E-blast, but there are a great portion of our community that maybe not, doesn't read the papers about our distribution list, and so we wanted to reach out to them with great things that were happening.
Okay. And with that, I would like that somewhere in the, on the back page, the postal customer side, we should have our phone number there for, for people to contact us, you know, because if they don't have a computer, these links are not gonna help them. Okay? And then the other thing, since this is like a board, we're trying to communicate to the public, shouldn't we have just a small square of when, when does the board meet? It doesn't even, it doesn't state anywhere when the, when this board convenes. So for those people that might want to come to meetings. And then my final thought was, we're, we're allowing the public, we're giving them a notification of the referendum question, was there any thought to giving them notification of the upcoming April 13th Buildings and Grounds public meeting?
Well, you know, I think, it's up to you, but one of the comments I heard you say about this is that there's only so much real estate. I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna knock some stuff out, but I think we're past that time.
I'm just putting my points out there in public.
And Kay has kinda proven my point that in the future, this should be done by committee, so.
Bruce, for this time, can we put the, I think we can, what the tweaks are doing with Central and South, we can get a phone number on there?
Yeah, and I, we could add a line, board of education meetings that are held at alternate, whatever we say, alternate locations twice a month. We could do that.
But that gets, you know, it's the first and the third, but normally we meet in the second and the fourth. So I, I would think for right now, get the phone number on there. Kay has some good ideas for next time.
The next one.
And then my final point is to Ms. Manley's having a committee. By having a committee, would, I believe that if there is such a committee formed, then our PR person, Karen Warner, should be part of that committee, since we're paying her to do kinda this stuff.
And speaking of Karen, I think Karen and Bruce did a masterful job on this, and many of us in here are longtime teachers, and even with the best paper that ever comes in from your best student, you put red on the paper. And so the fact that everybody says, I think this could be better, or whatever, I do not think detracts from the quality of the piece.
And I lied, I do have one more point on the, how this is distributed to the zip codes, because I know at some of, the last mailers that we did, you did it to blanket zip codes. Isn't there a database that can be secured from Therese Cockrell's office for the taxpayers? And that way it's?
In regards to that, Kay, I was intimately involved within the summer, when there are mailing such as this, congressional mailers, the cheapest way to do it is for the postal service to have some overlap. It is, so therefore, if you have both sides of the street, it's more expensive to only hit the one side of the street that is you. So then congressional, people do mailers, I mean, that is the way you do it for the most expedient and cheapest rate, because I questioned Karen on that last time, because we had some people upset because somebody on the wrong side of Westmont got one bug.
Okay, just, it was just a thought.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Ms. Debbie, when you're ready, please.
Ms. Manley? Aye. Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mrs. Gallo?
No, I can't support this at this point in time, but come, for the next budget, I would like two newsletters built into the budget for next time.
Mrs. Planson? Uh, no. Dr. Skoda?
Aye. Motion passes Board of Three. Bruce, if you wanna take academics there with a three-year calendar?
Sure, I'll pass this to Pam. This is, we're bringing this to the board for information because it's a reflection of the calendar that the board passed. So obviously, I basically, I guess we can say if you have questions for Pam, so we'll be happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions?
It is, it is pretty self-explanatory. Okay, thank you.
There's no way, there's no one else.
Moving on.
We're sure nobody has a question?
Rick?
Eric Sloan.
Like Frozen said.
Okay, maybe we'll be as fortunate with this one. Mr. Maniscalco?
Yeah.
A preliminary 2015, 2016 staffing recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Stroud. Can you kinda sum that up in two or three sentences? Yeah, sure. You have a large report in front of you. We spent a lot of time compiling this information. Staffing is at the forefront of everything we do. It really sets the foundation for the next school years so that we ensure we provide all of our students a rigorous and comprehensive education. So, a lot of information in front of you, so I'll just open up the floor to the board if there are any questions.
Now, first of all, maybe if you could explain the process, you went with this, and I wanna make this very clear, and I reiterated this to Dr. Law repeatedly, Dr. Law was never under any instruction from me or any board member find ways to save money. And the administration was told to make academically sound decisions and come back to the board, because we're not balancing any budgets on the back of the kids.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I'll start off from the very beginning. I mean, last year was my first year with the district in terms of understanding the board's goal with staffing last year. We went through the whole curriculum equity motion at both schools, and there was a lot of feedback, pros and cons about that. So going into the staffing season this year, Ms. Filesma set a great foundation in January. Initially, the goal was to create equitable class sizes at both schools based on the students' needs, based on student enrollment. That was the foundation we worked off of. We made the proposal to the board in January, and that's what we kinda took and we ran with it. We've spent about the past month and a half, had about a dozen meetings. The principals, as well as the APs, have worked tirelessly with the department chairs to staff at where our students' needs are. And we are at the point today where district-wide, we are asking for, as of today, an increase of .4.
And also, especially for the members of the audience, what's, in what areas are we gaining and what areas are we losing? So how do we?
Sure.
And especially since, I believe, we have decreasing enrollment, but at the same time, we're going up in staffing a little bit. So explain how we got there.
Sure. So at Hinsdale South last year, I mean, the overall class sizes were lower than they are this year because of the framework. So we literally set our own caps with courses. So our gen ed courses, we capped at 25, give or take two. PE and music, we capped at 43, plus or minus two. Our Tier Two, or RTI, response to intervention courses, which have our more at-risk students in there, we capped those at 15, give or take two. And then our labs courses and some of our electives courses that have limited equipment, like pottery, there's an X amount of pottery wheels, et cetera, graphic design, we capped those at 22. So, that's the foundation that we use when we staff. If we wanna literally go down the grid from a school perspective at a very high-level overview, Hinsdale Central.
Next page.
Let's start right from the very beginning.
Okay, slide five.
So actually, I think it's the, if you pass through the actual memos, it's the first page spreadsheet, it says Hinsdale Central FTE analysis. So overall, Hinsdale Central, you see a total FTE towards the bottom, and it says 9.5. So they are, we are proposing an increase of 9.5 staff at Central in addition to what they've staffed this year. And that, we arrived at that number a couple of different ways. So, first and foremost, even though as, at this point, their enrollment is steady, they're, right now, we're trending to be almost right on track to where we are this year. I believe it's minus one is the exact number. If you look at the department FTE, we are only asking for an increase of .3 in the actual classroom. So we were kinda able to keep it steady there. We're asking for an increase of .3.
It's not .3, it's .4.
No.
No, .3.
Or on top.
So for department FTE, the increase is only .3. Again, when you take into consideration the framework that we use in terms of the class size, it went down a little bit from what we were staffing last year. Last year in PE, we were running some sections with 50-plus kids, we were running some gen ed sections with 30-plus kids. So the framework really leveled it out. So that's where the .3 increase was from here. From special ed's perspective, we are adding a lot of the FTE there. We're adding a psych, we're adding a social worker, we're adding departmental FTE due to rules and regulations. Psychs, we're working off of the 1,000-to-1 national guideline ratio for special ed. There's about 2,800 kids at Central, only two psychologists, we gotta add another one.
So, staying with that, 1,000-to-1 regular population or 1,000-to-1 special ed population?
School population, school population. And that's the minimum requirement, is a 1,000-to-1, if I understand that correctly. Correct, Tammy?
Yes.
It's a minimum requirement.
It's not a requirement, it's guidance. That's important.
Excuse me, sorry, guidance, 1,000-to-1 guidance in the special education realm. And then we added a proposal for an extra dean, and then increase to the literacy program as well.
And I do have a question with regard to the deans.
Sure.
Because a lot of the, what I saw that were additions to staff were administrative additions, which I consider dean and an administrative addition.
Yeah.
South is down in population. Is there any thought to splitting the third dean between Central and South and/or transferring one of the deans to South and reassigning perhaps some of the dean's work that would be left over to someone else who is qualified to somehow make it more economically feasible while still serving Central, who I understand is in great need of this position?
Sure. Yes, we did talk about that many times. We talked about the options of moving someone over, if that was even an option. And the truth of the matter is, South has their own needs. They're still at 1,500 students, give or take a few, divided by the three deans, the ratio, student to dean ratio is up 500, 500-to-1.
Okay, but realistically, most kids who go through high school never see their, I don't even know who my daughter's dean is, I have not a clue, not a clue.
I understand that, but I do know at, at Hinsdale South, they have certain issues that they deal with on a daily basis, and I know that...
So does Central. There are different issues.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing.
But they are issues.
Sure, I'm not disagreeing with you all, I'm saying is...
Different numbers.
The need at South is justifiable for three deans. Now, when we look at the dean situation at Hinsdale Central, currently, right now, they're sitting at about 937 students per dean.
Correct. So how do you justify South having 501 and Central having 901?
Sure. So, so again, the needs are different. So for example, one of the deans at Hinsdale South actually oversees the students at the Transition Center as well.
There's 40 of them. I mean, come on, 540?
In addition, in addition, in addition to the DHH program.
Well, how many students are, those were counted into the 500, because you just counted the entire student population down there, so, you know, your numbers are a little inaccurate there.
I'm trying to justify, I'm trying to justify...
Correct, but they're still at 501.
I'm trying to...
With special needs, Hinsdale Central students, with special needs as well.
This is Pollard, it looks like you're eager to jump in here and say something.
Go ahead.
Mr. Maniscalco did note the Transition Center, but also as we add some ED BD programming, our deans are very much involved in those kinds of activities. I, I think there are, you know, our staffing recommendations bring Central up into a place where they need to be as far as their deans, and that we are comfortable but stretched with our current staffing.
Okay, so your ED BD cannot be taken care of with social workers who are also being increased? See, I just see it as inequity for Central.
Stephanie, do you use data to categorize what the deans do and how much time they spend with your students?
Right. We have office discipline referrals data, we have suspension, suspension data that we look at all the time. Also, one of our deans is our PBIS coordinator or coach or whatever, and that is one of his roles.
And someone else could do PBIS if he were transferred.
Well, sure, I mean, we, we can go about restructuring the dean's positions from start to finish if that's, if that's what we choose to do, but I know specific...
So if you hire one dean and you transfer one dean, then you're bringing Central down to almost where South will end up. Now, I see those reports that come through from our two principals on a monthly basis. Sometimes Central has more discipline than South has.
But the needs are very different. Mark, if you could, I'd like you to address the, the job responsibilities of the dean at Central that they don't necessarily adhere to at South in terms of the SST program.
Right, and I wouldn't wanna speak for the role at South, because I haven't observed it directly, but I do know that my expectations here is that our deans aren't sitting in the office waiting for the disciplinary referral to come across their desk. They're actively involved with their team, SST, the Student Services Team, to cooperate with the guidance counselor, the social worker, and psychologist on that team, to be a proactive part of the intervention for all students. Sometimes numbers don't always equate to need, so it's difficult to section our staffing for support service personnel, counselors, deans, and social workers based off the true number of their caseload, but it does give us an accurate baseline for that. I know that the most critical thing that we talk about with our, with our deans and with our teaching staff is how we're addressing students who are chronically absent, and sometimes that's chronically excused absent students, who aren't cutting class or are an unverified absence, but who do get attendance issues of upwards of 12 or 13, even sometimes 20 or 25 absences. And our deans are actively a part of tracking that. By that, I mean, there might need to be an intervention meeting with the student, the parent, and the counselor around attendance and finding out what the impediment might be for that student to, number one, be on time, but then to attend school on a regular basis. And sometimes there are things going on at home that that begins to transition from the dean's office to the guidance or the social worker's office to get that student back on track and get them into class. So, you know, our deans aren't just the law and order side of things in our schools. Our deans are really the ones that are positively interacting with students and really becoming an advocate on their behalf with the student support team. So for our numbers right now, to be at almost 930 or so caseload for our deans is really, I think, to our comparable school in the district, but also to our comparable schools in other surrounding districts, that number's awful high.
Okay, I'm not arguing about your dean, your extra dean. I'm arguing about Stephanie having three and you having four and her having two is what I'm arguing about.
And I would say that the, the needs at another building are no less important, and the active involvement that it takes to not only supervise the building on a daily basis in the general student areas during before and after school and during lunches is an important piece that I think requires more than... is an important piece that I think requires more than, than two people to adequately do that and staff the office.
But Mark, you're talking like there's nobody there. We all know that there are lunch supervisors there. We all know that a police officer is sometimes in there. And I, you know, I've been at the lunches, I've seen at least one of the deans. That's it.
Well, you should, but there should also be-
Maybe I should be seeing all three, but I only see one.
Well, and I, I think that you have to have a, a broader perspective of the role of the dean, that, that there is time that they need to spend in the office.
Correct.
Developing.
Correct.
And working on their response to the referrals that come across their desk and the other things that I spoke of with attendance, which I'm sure are as much on Stephanie's radar screen for her school as they are here for me as well. So I think that the, the numbers that we see here with South maintaining their current level of deans and us increasing adequately address the needs and don't-
Sorry, I just don't see it. I don't see it. They have so much less of a student population. You have a larger student population. I understand there's different needs. It's two completely different schools, two different vibes, you know, two different sets of problems. I get that. And I'm a community member, but I don't get why she should make it that-
Claudia, what would be your optimal solution?
I told you, my, my optimal solution would be to give him one more dean and transfer the one dean from South over to Central, so he has four.
If I could intercede, just because I have a unique perspective on this, I did start in this district 16 years ago as a dean of students here at Central. So getting that extra dean is something we've, we've tried to get through for many, many years. I was also at a school previous year as the principal for four years that's the same size as South, and we just got up, as I left, we got approved for getting the third dean because we didn't have enough. So having two with a school that size is just untenable. You are tracking the attendance of all of those students as well as the other items that, that the two principals mentioned.
So how do you explain that I don't even know who my daughter's dean is? And reality is, I've heard Dr. Skoda say the same thing, many of the students do not even know who their dean is. So you're making it sound like, you know, the poor guy has, has got to see 900 students in one day. They don't. Reality is, they probably see a, a very low percentage of the students or even know the names of the very low percentage of students.
But those needs have to be taken care of, so I know the other, yes, there's a person-
I don't see a justification for it.
So one of the things that, and I certainly, if someone likes to get things done, I appreciate you just jumped right in here, is that one of the ways we presented staffing the way we did is just so we could have these kinds of conversations. Because we, instead of just giving you a number of FTE and say, oh, please, you know, support this, say, here's the number, but this is how this number rolls up. And because these kinds of conversations, rather than believe, believe that we have, we have discussed this a lot and we continue to scrub and we can continue to scrub, you know, all these data. The, the question though is, for us, this is at the, tonight, as of tonight, this is what we recommend as our, as our staffing request. If the board says you need to make an adjustment here or there, we can very easily do that and then you can see exactly where that change we made. We can go make the change and bring it back in, in two weeks. So this is, this is why we present what you did.
That would be my change. That would be one of my changes.
So Claudia.
Yes.
You're suggesting we not bring on an additional dean at Central?
Good Lord, no. I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting we transfer one of the deans from South to Central.
So give South less deans?
Less dean or a half of a dean.
And Principal Palmer, why don't we cut to the chase there? Do you need the current deans you have?
Yes, Dr. Skoda.
Okay. So we, we, I, I think it's important to note that we did look at all avenues for the deans. We looked at a part-time dean. I, I threw out the idea of getting possibly an associate dean.
Yes.
And we looked at all those options, but the truth of the matter is that Hinsdale Central, based on their sheer volume-
I am not arguing Central, Dominic. Why do we even go back to Central?
I would just like to finish for a second. That's okay.
Yes.
Based on the sheer number of students, we wanted a dean that can be split even across the board with all the other deans. At Hinsdale South specifically, it was my goal this year to understand the role of the dean. When I first started here in the 13, 14 school year, that was one of the first staffing requests Hinsdale Central made. Maybe it was the new director of HR, they thought they could slam one under me. I was asked for an extra dean. I denied them in the 13, 14 school year for the extra dean because I wanted to understand both schools, why we were so low at one in student enrollment, why we were so high at the other, and I needed the justification. Took a year to get there. We have worked with the deans at South specifically this year and we're looking to possibly expand the role of the dean in terms of a longer contract. So I've been able to understand their, their role a lot more and they are extremely busy and they have a, a large caseload, even with 500 kids each.
Okay, so not at the school that often, but when I am there, there's nobody in the office.
Everything, that's interesting because every time I'm there, it's packed.
That's a good sign, if you have moving the deans off.
I think the other thing to, to understand about the, the role of the dean is that there is an unpredictability about what's going to, I often joke with our deans that if you leave the window open long enough, you never know what's going to float in and land on your desk. And the day that you walk in and anticipate that nothing's going to happen is the day that you catch a case that takes all three deans to investigate and get to the bottom of and thoroughly offer the students that are involved their due process and, and get through what it takes to resolve a disciplinary matter that is sometimes very complex. And with the current level of staffing that we have at both schools, I think it's, it's evident that, that South is appropriately staffed in that regard and that we were requesting an, an increase to meet our needs.
Hi. I, since this is informational and it's draft, right? I think this is, tonight is for comments and, you know, suggestions. So what I understand from last year, we, as a board, approved six additional FTE for Hinsdale Central. And it was down next first year or so, the kind of process was a little bit extended and went back and forth and, and ended up having, looking at the sectioning and the head count and added, we had six permanent positions. This year, we have 1.6 FTE additional recommending for the Transition Center. Am I correct?
Correct. 1.6.
1.6. So there's 9.5 total, new ones, 1.6 at Transition Center, which is 7.9. So we're talking real people, so about eight heads. So between last year and this year at Hinsdale Central, we're adding 14 people if you're looking over a two-year, two-year period. Yes, over a two-year period. So let me, let me finish this because my point is really just a general one because I, I don't want to really jump into, into all these details because I think that's your, your job to do. But my point is that I believe that, this is 1.40 heads that we've added in the real people. So just assume the average head is $100,000. So it's $1.4 million of additional permanent cost for the district and we've had no enrollment increase. So if I'm looking at this just from a pure, I'm going to jump from advocating for the students to advocating for the taxpayers for a second here. If we have no enrollment increase, we have incredible performance in this high school and we added 14 new head count and, you know, 1.5 and 1.75 million dollars of additional overhead, that, that's a, that's a pretty big number if I'm, I'm not knowing, not knowing a lot of details as a taxpayer, if I'm, say, just looking at it from that. So, so what, what does that make me conclude is that I would like for our staff to look at and revisit some of their assumptions. I don't really want to jump and say, personally, I don't want to say about any one of these positions, although I have some opinions, not too dissimilar than Claudia on some items that I think I know something about, but that's not for me to micromanage. What I'd like to do is give my, as a fiduciary, say, listen, I, I'd like to challenge the staff to go back at, particularly at Hinsdale Central and look at it. And the 1.5, 1.75 million dollars of, of overhead that we've added over the last two years is something that, that is, we really need to take a little harder look at that. And if that means you have to look at your assumptions, then you should relook at your assumptions, whether or not it's two more, two more head in a, you know, in a class or whatever your, your assumptions are from your, from your program. I, I would like you to look at that because it seems, it's a lot, that's a lot of money to be adding over a two-year period. And if there, and perhaps maybe this should be something that is more gradual than adding all these FTE right now. So that's, that's my general, I would say, challenge back on this, on the head count. And then separately, I did want to commend the staff and particularly, in particular Stephanie about looking at her, her school and, and making some decisions that probably were, were, you know, overdue decisions and I, we appreciate that. And that's not an easy thing for those, those department chairs and the principal to, to serve up. So I would say on behalf of the taxpayers, thank you very much for that.
Well, one thing we should, we're happy to view our assumptions, but recall, we brought assumptions to the board in January in the staffing framework. We said, here's an assumption that we're going to be using for staffing TRT classes. Here are the assumptions we're using for staffing lab classes, PE, general education. We, we can certainly go back and adjust those numbers. We can say, instead of 25, you know, plus or minus two, we can say 27. You know, for RTI, we could say, instead of 15, we could say 17, 18. I mean, pick your number. We, we can, we can go back and do that. But that was the purpose of the assumptions that we brought in January. We said, this assumption and the other assumption we're going to be using.
Correct, but I don't think, without seeing it laid out against-
That's a fair point. So now we're seeing the outcome, we say, okay, you know what, we need to go back and, and we can, we can adjust. We can do that.
That's an unfair thing to say is that, that those assumptions would be cast in stone without seeing results. And because one would say, okay, do these assumptions look generally okay? Yes, of course, they, they look generally okay.
As an assumption.
As an assumption. And so you come back and you have this, and this process is an iterative process. This is not a one stop. You do it once and you're, it's over. It's an iterative process. You go back, the same way you're doing your staffing now, as I learned last year, you're going to go back and forth and look at this. So my, my general request is to go revisit some of these assumptions because going with no enrollment increase whatsoever, we're, we're adding 1.5 to 1.75 million dollars plus whatever else we have with pensions and everything.
I don't, I don't get that math, adding the 1.5.
If you've got 14 people, 14 people, if you're going to challenge me, that's 14 people-
I'm not challenging you. I'd like, I'd like your explanation because I don't understand where, where you got 14 new people for next year.
It didn't have 14 new people. I'll repeat it. So last year, we had six additional FTE and this year-
Based on the enrollment. So what was the previous enrollment?
Wait a second. No, the enrollment didn't really increase much.
From the previous year. It did not increase from the previous year. So how was it justified then?
Class size. Some of it was class size.
If you remember, K, if you remember, members of the community were after us because they wanted us to hire two staff and we sent the principals in to look and they came back and said, we're crowded, we really could use six. So that was a board decision to give them what they needed. And we gave them more than they were asking for. Had to look at it.
There was, there was an increase in enrollment from 12, 13 to 13, I'm sorry, from 13, 14 to 14, 15. There was an increase in enrollment and initially I-
Let's talk about some real numbers for this year.
Sure, I can, I can-
You can't dismiss this. So the, the numbers that I'm, that I'm citing, K, six, six additional people were added last year and about eight for this year. So that's 14. If you say, okay, it's a press leak.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
9.5 minus 1.6 with the Transition Center.
But, but the total FTE is .4. The total FTE from, increase from 13, from 14, 15-
You're only talking about Central.
Yeah, talking only about Central.
But, but they're taking staff from South to fill that role at Central.
Is that right?
So, yeah, so you look at your overall FTE, you're only up .4. So I, I, yeah, I'm confused on where you're getting-
You can be confused all you want. It's Central, Central's got 14 additional people over the last two years.
Yes, but not, as far as taking on new debt, you're only increasing your FTE count from 14, 15 to 15, 16 by .4 according to this summary analysis. So you're, so just, you know, you're just, you're shuffling the deck.
No, I'm not shuffling the deck. It's very clear. We have two different entities. We have Hinsdale South as a high school. We have Hinsdale Central.
One budget.
We, we're, I'm just pointing, I'm just pointing this out. It is not, it's not necessarily one budget. They have it split out by school, right?
Well, let me just make a point. It, it doesn't matter if it's one budget and I think the point that you're making and I generally agree with it is that you had some belt seeming to be-
Guys, come on.
Seeming to be belt tightening at South and then it's all used back up. And so what we should have seen, I would have hoped to have seen is some pullback so that there is less of an effect on, on the overall budget that we're having trouble with. Everybody's worried about a $10,000 newsletter, but we're, we're, the bigger numbers are not being addressed.
That doesn't, that doesn't address student issues. But the, but, but what they're doing this year based upon the framework is making class size equitable. So that's- Well, I wish they would have the same curriculum at Hinsdale South because that still hasn't happened and it's not at the whole area. I'm talking class size. So that's what the framework is, is, is accomplishing or is addressing, is class size. So class size, you know, was higher last year, I don't know, 24 or 25, and now they've brought it down to, I think, 22 to be in par with South. So they increased South's to, to make it, and so you're more equitable now. So that's- The question I think goes back to what Ed was saying is, is that the magic number that is for, you can live with?
Yeah, that's a good point. And so we can take this back to the assumptions. I mean, if I said that the assumptions we discussed in January sentence, I certainly spoke. And as we're seeing now, those assumptions apply to sectioning, here seeing the numbers. So to return to that question, we're happy to go back with a different set of assumptions. So now that we see the results, if the board wants to give us a new set of assumptions to work from, we'd be happy to do that.
That's not, my request was to look at a scenario where you-
I'd like to say the assumptions.
Yes, look at this scenario with the different, with, with different assumptions.
Right, so I'm asking the board what assumptions should we use? We're happy to go back and do this several different ways, but if we get the assumptions to-
Dominic, is Central's enrollment up for next year?
Right now, we're holding exactly steady through, down by one.
However, what I mean is-
Okay, so, so therefore, why does, outside of special ed, why does regular education then need to have staff transfer from South to Central if Central's student population is holding steady?
The department FTE is literally up .3. That's it in the, in the department, in the department FTE.
Okay, so what everybody is not seeing is that Tammy has, has requested an increase for her staff to meet the mandates of the law for special education. Because as I understand it, and as much as people don't want this said, this district has been out of compliance with the law for several years for special education students. And I also think that Dr. Law should be self-reporting that to the Illinois State Board of Education that the district has in fact been out of compliance. Instead of running classes at 30% special ed, they've been running them at Central at 50% special ed. I went and dug back with Dr. Law in a conversation as to who was responsible for that. It wasn't Dr. Koepman because Dr. Koepman has only been here one year and was not involved in staffing. I highly doubt it was Mr. Kazman and Mr. Houseman last year, having been interim principals that they would be charged with making such a large decision. So that would then go back to Michael McGrory, principal, who was the previous principal. So, you know, there is evidence and then there is thoughts and insinuations and you can think what you want and there's nothing wrong with circumstantial evidence. But a cut was made to the special ed students to sacrifice to the regular ed students, which is extremely upsetting, having had a daughter go through the special ed program and having to beg for services, literally beg for services, having to file due process twice against the district, twice. That something like this could happen to special ed students is unforgivable, absolutely 100% unforgivable. And furthermore, it is, it is even more unfair to the regular ed students because these teachers who have been having these, these classes staffed that way, the teachers have to attend IEP meetings, taking much more time away from the regular ed students, much more time out of their time to teach classes, much more time for the special ed teachers themselves. And why this board was not told about this or informed about this prior to now is very, very disturbing as to who knew, what knew, who knew what when. I don't know. But perhaps, perhaps- But perhaps, perhaps, asking questions as a board member, such as the way Diane Barrett did, ought to have been taken seriously because this is unforgivable, what has happened to the special ed students, absolutely 100% unforgivable.
Okay, well, I think that's sobering. So we, we do know, we have, we have been very focused on trying to improve the special ed program and we're thankful for Tammy entering here. And I want to go back to this idea of just revisiting some assumptions. So it doesn't mean that's where we're going to end up. It just means that we need to understand what the scenarios would be.
What the effect of this.
What the effect of the scenarios would be. And again, I do understand that this could be a, moving staff from one place to another, which is ideal because we don't want to, we don't want to get rid of staff. The main thing is, if you sit there and look at Hensale Central, it's, you know, probably a million and a half dollars of extra, of extra spending. So if some of that's on special ed and we need it, okay, for compliance and for better services. So if there's a better way for us to do that, perhaps looking at class size, which we, we brought down and maybe we have to, maybe if we put the class size back up and we migrate this addition over a period of a couple of years instead of all in one year, then, then I think that, that might be something that we should, we should consider when we have some numbers in front of us. So Dr. Locke and, you know, Dominic Queen, are there certain assumptions that we should be discussing for you to look at a scenario?
Well, you know what, I want to get back to special ed because I want to ask Dr. Law, is it true that the district is out of compliance? Because I'm going to get asked by the process for this and I'd want confirmation from the administration that that is in fact true.
When you say special education compliance, do you mean what area of special education?
Bruce, you know what I'm talking about.
Are we talking about 70/30?
Yes.
I'm sure there are classes that don't meet 70/30. How many there are, I, I don't know off the top of my head, the percentages of the.
So Bruce, is it a yes or is it a no? It's one question. Are we out of compliance with the 70/30?
We do not meet 70/30 in every class.
Thank you, that's all that was. The answer is yes. That's what was asked.
I think we've got two different issues at play here. We have general education. I visited Hensale Central on a whole day in May of 2014. When I had that visit in late of 2014, every class I was in was full. It was full. I mean, there weren't classes of 12 kids, 13 kids. I could barely find a seat. As a teacher, I believe the guidelines that Bruce was given for assumptions is 25 students in a class varying from 23 to 27. That is very, very reasonable numbers. Those are reasonable numbers. I don't think you want to go to 28 in a class and we'll go between 26 and 30. The other question here is, so basically, especially with us getting class sizes where they should be at South, there's going to be somewhat of a decrease there. I don't see much of that decrease having to go over to Central. Most of the increase seems to be in special ed. So the question is, do we need all that? And Tammy, we haven't been over to you for a while. So in a class, I'm an English teacher and I have five kids in my English class who have IEPs only regarding math. Therefore, are they regarded as having IEPs?
Just to answer your question, they actually have a different way that they section. And so when they are creating courses for the students at the IEP meeting shows that they need to be in a co-taught class because they have special ed needs for that particular subject matter, that course is coded as co-taught. So only students for their IEP can be entered in there. Assuming an IEP who is not selected for co-taught English would never be sent to that class.
Okay, another question. We have, believe it or not, we have many college-bound kids who go to excellent colleges, selective colleges, and they have IEPs because they may have a little processing problem and they need extra time on tests. Would those type of students fall into the 30% that triggers having an extra teacher?
Sure, the administrative regs that govern it is part 226730, but the first part defines what a general education classroom is. The only ones that are exempt are students who have a speech-only IEP. They do not need to be counted as part, part of the 70/30. Everyone else does.
So that regulation's kind of flawed bureaucratically. So if you have an IEP that covers math, it's.
You would not be put in a co-taught English class. You would be put in a different English class that's not designated as a co-taught class.
Okay, so they're specific enough that.
That is how the two high schools, they do an amazing job.
Okay, great. Getting back to the scenario I asked for.
Hey, so what assumption do you want changed? Do you want them to tweak the number to 26, 27? I think we have two different problems here and we have to do what we have to do with special ed in my opinion. And therefore, to meet statute, if we need to get six more teachers to get into compliance, I don't see how to get around that. The real question is, the separate question is, are we properly staffed for our general education kids?
There you go. So, well, you could, it's really get back to the administration would know where they, where they might be able to run a different scenario that's, I would say, a clean scenario. And that might change just general ed because some of these other items, you're, you're clearly advocating outside of a direct FTE and you're looking at it workload. So it would be saying what you think the, one of the assumptions would be, which would be classroom size, right? Is that correct, Bruce?
Yeah, that's right. So, so right, and that's an important point. The assumptions we're talking about are not, would, would it be in the class averages as well as in the, yeah, class averages? Because when we're talking about, unless we were saying that, you know, the guideline of 1,000 months aside, we don't, we want to adjust that. I mean, we're going by that. But, or I'm thinking assumptions, I'm thinking about 15 to one, 25 to one, or three to one.
That's a, that's a starting point.
The 15 to one is, is plus or minus 15 to one for the.
RTI.
RTI students, correct? So that you're talking, you could be talking about 13 in one section. That sounds, right, 13 or 17, but the 13 sounds awfully low to me. I think I'd be more comfortable personally with a 17 where you could go down to 15 or 19. You're still under 20.
Sure, so would it be a fair assumption to recommend to the board, us taking the numbers of an additional, we'll go up two. So in gen ed right now, we're at 25. We'd go 27, plus or minus two. PE music, we're at 43. We go to 45, plus or minus two?
I was, no, I was saying RTI, but I think I'm hearing other people.
The answer.
It's an essay as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a yes. You should look at those other scenario, those other mathematical scenarios to see what the impact is on, on headcount. I, I think RTI, the class, RTI for sure. And the classroom size here, if you look at the overall class, overall average class size at Hensale Central from 2014, 15 says 22.8. It's going down to 21.5. So that, that to me is, that's, that's a jump downward. That's a little too steep. So whatever you're going to do with your assumptions, that might keep that at 22.8 or 23, then so, then change that. So is that, is that your general classroom size assumption, Bruce?
22?
No, I know that's not your general classroom size assumption.
25.
It's 25.
Yeah, 25.
So if you move that to 26 or 27, maybe that keeps this number 22.8. Instead of, instead of that going down to 21.5, which is a big jump down, it keeps it at 22.8.
We can definitely run the numbers. We can run the numbers and up.
It's not going to hurt anybody by us running these numbers, right? And this is the number.
This is what we do.
This is the number one driver for our, for our cost in the whole district. There isn't anything more important than us looking at this for our cost and for how we're delivering our services to our students. So looking at a couple of scenarios to me seems prudent.
Well, I, just one thing for me, please. Tammy, I would just ask you for our benefit, you know, I, I've heard you talk about potential laws and guidance and such, perhaps with respect to the increases, because the bulk of it is in special, special ed. If you could provide to us maybe some cross-references to the requirements and whether they're guidance or rules, just so I can personally understand that a little better.
The only true guide, rules are around class sizes for special education. The rest are guidance for school psychologists. There are no national standards for school social workers.
I think you'd like to see it in writing though, what it says, right?
Well, yeah, or if it, if it, in response to what you just said, if it's some guidance, then perhaps going back and looking and seeing if there is room anywhere, just like Dominic's going back and looking to see if there's some adjustments to the assumptions that you made. Given that, you know, I think, you know, given the budget situation, we just want to be careful and make sure we're not, from my point of view, not staffing without absolutely success.
And the next question, kind of off, bouncing off of that, Tammy, is, and I'm not trying to kill the messenger, trust me, I am not, because you have been probably an angel of the messenger this year with what needs to be addressed and be fixed and so forth. But sitting in this seat, I'm kind of a little bit unnerved about almost every meeting and there's a bomb going off in your department. You know, this is wrong, that's wrong, that's wrong. And, you know, God bless you for, for addressing it. I don't want to see any more bombs. I'd really like to see the comprehensive report from you as to what the needs are now, what's out of compliance, where it's going and what your recommendations are. Sooner rather than later, because that guy over there is building a budget and you have certain amount, I mean, I just, every time, it's like Tammy has a report, I just cringe. I'm like, oh no, what's it going to be now? You know, so.
I'd be happy to. We are in the middle, if you recall, in the fall, we do not have a workload plan. So that committee has met, that was required back in 2009 by ISB. So as part of that, the entire department of special ed took a survey, a very detailed survey, and the committee met and went through all the data and that was what was also driving the workload plan. We're meeting it in April to draft the process and that will eventually come to the board that's scheduled for June.
But I want to hear about anything out of compliance, anything that you, you believe needs improvement immediately, because we're in the middle of building a budget for next year and it's, it's better that it be brought to us now so we can grapple with it as opposed to be coming out of compliance in yet another area, if there is such an area.
Yeah, I think for the final staffing proposal, we, on March 23rd, we agreed that we would have a finalized report from special ed, which was a segue from the one that you proposed in January, correct? You had talked to the board in January about the ED BD program and we said we would kind of tie everything in, that into the final staffing proposal, correct? But then to March.
I actually don't remember that and I was thinking this would probably be a good springboard for whoever is seated at, at the new board to kind of, you know, after the election.
Sure, and I think this preliminary report is addressing a lot of the areas that we've talked about from a special ed perspective.
I know, every time I open this, Tammy has a report, I just go, oh my God, what's now?
Right, I mean, I mean, this is how we're addressing. We're addressing it as we are finding out new things.
Correct, but what I'm trying to get to is, I don't want to wait any longer to find this stuff out. I would rather she be upfront with everything and, and this is.
Well, she, she hasn't been hiding anything. When she finds it, she comes to us. It's because, but how you're phrasing it, I think is not the way you want to phrase it.
No, no, it's not that she's hiding anything. I just want to know upfront what it is we're dealing with because obviously what has happened before was not the way it should be.
I would like to bring it back to this. We have two issues here. Special ed, special ed's going to take care of itself and we're going to do what we have to do to get in compliance, period. Regular ed, what troubles me here is the academic class sizes seem to be already full. And I don't think we should be playing with assumptions there. Two areas, for instance, we have 27 or 28 average in math class. Why would you be playing with assumptions there? The two areas, I mean, the two areas where there may be some massaging is health. At both buildings, health is like 17 or 18. And if I had to have one. And the other thing is PE at both schools. They're at about 42. Everybody knows this. If you have 42 kids on your PE roster, the PE teacher will never see 42 kids in that class because they are.
Except at South.
But don't they get out?
We do not opt out as high at all than Central. That is correct.
Except they break down into sections, stuff like, so that's, that's kind of misgotten misleading.
If that is the case, there should be different numbers. And the other thing that is a disadvantage for South is their number, well, maybe that, that does make sense because they do have adapted PE in there, so their regular ones would be a little lower. But at Central, having 42 or 43 kids in an average PE class where we have so many athletes, you know, what are they really seeing there?
I'm pushing 45 at Central, 45, 45.
Well, except, you know what, at South, I think they run them differently than they do at Central because they're, this, maybe I'm wrong, maybe someone can jump in here. At South, they offer the students options, you know, every six weeks or so of what section they want.
Right, but we did section this, this year. We did section so that each PE teacher on average is responsible for the 43 to 45 kids.
Because I know before it was.
Now, they are going to have options still, so one teacher might have 60 kids for a three-week period and one might have 30.
Well, are you going to put some limit?
Because that happens.
Well.
There are limits by facility, yes. But for example, our weight room now is wonderful and, and holds more students who would opt into that, so.
Dominic, is there a reason why health seems to be so much lower than the academic subjects?
Yes, I do, health, we kept at 25 as well. It's just, sometimes you have those bad breaks in, in the sectioning, specifically in PE. I was just looking at the numbers at Central. You know, for example, early bird PE, there was 98 kids enrolled. We couldn't afford to run three sections, so we ran two at 49 apiece. But then again, we're down in another area, so it bounces up. But in health, we're at 25 at Central, excuse me. And at South, we are at, we only had 13 kids enrolled in the dance hall.
If I could inter.
I'm sorry.
Introduce here. I'm showing math has at Central a 22.8 proposed class size, not a 27, and health has a 28.1. Dr. Skoda, I'm wondering if you're off a line on, or we're looking at different pages. So I just think it would be helpful if we know what page we're looking at. These are very small lines and, I mean, it doesn't have a line across. I'm holding a paper up to see it across. So I'm wondering if you're off a line.
So look at page.
So is health 28.1?
Page 8 has all the differential class sizes.
That's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm looking at.
And I don't think he's looking at that because I could see the same thing you're talking about.
I'm on the line.
Rick, I'm going to go back to the same thing I said before.
However, I agree with that. There should be more kids in health class than in math class.
So Dr. Skoda, to answer your question about health, they are kept at 25 at both schools and we're running many sections of it and it's, it's a good class.
So overall, Stephanie and Mark, you believe you're running pretty tight with what's suggested there, right?
Yeah, I do, not only for our academic instructional areas that we're discussing here, health, mathematics and so forth, but also with our mandated FTE and our support staff. I fully endorse the, the proposal that we put forward tonight.
And of course, we already know with Principal Palmer, she squeezed.
But, Rick, I'm going to go back to the same thing I said before. There's no reason why we can't have our management team look at adjusting some of these assumptions and coming back with an alternate scenario.
Hey, what, Ed, what assumption do you want adjusted?
Again, general, general class size. Because I, I, I read it right off the chart. They get it, they understand it. And then you, you went in and said something from some casual observation you made in the classroom. I'd rather go off these numbers and then let them, let our, our management team look at it. It's 22.8, it's going down to 21.5. Make some assumptions and see if you can get that back so it's at least flat and see what the scenario looks like, at least.
Show me where, just so I have a 22.8.
Hensale Central FTE analysis, bottom right corner says overall average class size, 2014, 15 is 22.8.
Oh, I see, okay.
2015, 16, 21.5.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, you know, so, so, you know.
Where South is going, 23.
Yes, and so why, you know, I, I think that we need to get that adjusted on that.
No, I think it's important to note in that section that you, that you are referencing right now, the overall class size of average, that is taking into consideration every single student.
I noticed, I noticed, I, I know. So it's, so it's really, that number's not irrelevant.
Well, South's PE is going up from 35.6 to 42.
This is what I wanted to explain then. This is what I wanted to explain, that, that box, for that department, that is the average that you just said, Mr. Q. The overall class size average in that box is taking into account every single full-year student and every single full-year section, high, low, adaptive PE, Special Ed, all in, the overall class size average at Central that's being proposed next year is 21.5, so that's why some departments, like in PE, average class size is significant, you know, in the 30s and 40s, and then, but the overall is still 21.5, because it's taking into consideration everything, all in.
Right, and that's what we're looking at for our budget too, everything all in, so I think we just run that, run the scenario.
What about those students that register for public school, not knowing if they're gonna go to private school, and then they end up going to private school?
Last year, we were up at Central by four, I'm sorry, last year, we were up by 60 students that came last minute, we're trending, we're predicting that we're probably gonna get about 40 this year.
Okay, so that's...
No, they're not.
And then, then, there's also outstanding residency issues, so I think that, you know, but that's the bottom line, is that, you know, we're squeezed with a budget that's at .8 for next year, and yet we're running .4 over, and we're probably gonna get more students, so I think revisiting the assumptions is actually gonna happen.
Okay, so what?
It's going to happen.
But again, I would encourage board members to contact the administration...
But I have one thing that he told me to bring up, mentor coordinator, if South is going down 10 staff members, or eight, or whatever it is, that would mean to me that we're not, that there are not gonna be new teachers, correct? Is that...
Right, I said, when you spoke yesterday on the phone, I said, we should discuss that today, so I wasn't gonna bring that up. No, the, yeah, but you gotta remember though, the mentor coordinators work with more than just first-year students, first-year teachers, I'm sorry.
Second-year? But, I mean, it's all in, so, I want, I mean, in my opinion, this is an area that we are allocating in each building .2, so .4 in total district-wide, that in my opinion is a very important initiative for bringing on new staff, we talk a lot about training and having that institutional knowledge, it's important to have new teachers, years 1, 2, 3, and 4, paired up with experienced teachers to show them the ropes, and in my opinion, a .4 allotment moves mountains.
And then the other question I have is on the instructional tech leaders, now, we use those positions differently than other high school districts. Yeah, we do, you're using actual teaching staff to staff that, correct?
That's what we do at all high schools.
If you could picture a printer, if I could, uh...
No, I don't have it.
Right, this isn't, right, this isn't like technology, like computer tech, this isn't structural, like being a teacher...
Well, at what point does this, how do I say, you know, these days, there is an actual social media manager position at companies, it used to not be a position. So sometimes positions such as this actually age out, all of our teaching staff that are coming in, that are in college, are very tech-savvy, many of the teachers now are extremely tech-savvy, and I know this is people who are trying to show you how to best to use technology in terms of teaching a class and educating a class, and at what point does this become a nullity, where they just, the employees come in with that skill?
If, Pam, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a position that is required by the Illinois State Board of Education.
Well, the mentor coordinator would be, yeah, this is not required by ISBE, however, when teachers come in here, they have to learn about our specific grade book, the tablet technology, how to use all of that, so there's a great deal of training that goes along with that. Also, as we move to Google Apps for Education, these are the people that are out there discovering how to use that, training the teachers, they're gonna do all of the rollout, so they're very busy, they teach them, they're get up to date on all the Web 2.0 tools, you know, how to use clickers in the classroom, if teachers have any problems with the technology.
Yeah, but at what point does that become outdated, because people just come in with this skill?
It hasn't happened yet, we watch that, but that hasn't happened yet, so the fourth year induction is actually when, the fourth year of new teachers is when we spend a lot of time on the technology, but these tech, instructional tech people in the buildings are working constantly with teachers all throughout the year, helping the regular teachers, the veteran teachers, as well as the new teachers, so they do all the new teacher induction and training, but they also are troubleshooting and helping with grade book issues, teacher access center, home access center, so they're out there doing all the troubleshooting and the helping, so they're very busy.
Pam, would you also agree that if and when we get to the point where we implement a one-on-one instruction with our students, these positions are going to be instrumental in us actually succeeding with that rollout?
Definitely.
I know that Stephanie's been clearing her throat here for a second, but I wanted to jump in too, to say, I think we're blending the conversation about both mentor coordinator and instructional technology positions, and I wanted to kind of separate those two for a second, and I think that nothing speaks louder to our support for our teachers, not only in their first four years in the district, than supporting the mentor program, which has been, from my perspective, something that in my previous districts has not been as fundamentally rooted in the structure for the first four years as I've seen it here. So it's not just the single events that we do at induction in the summer, but it's a prolonged and ongoing mentor coordinating program for them on an individualized basis. So one teacher might be working on one specific skill with their coordinator, or then the mentor, while the others in that same induction year might be working on other things as well, so I've seen the evidence of that for the coordinator position. As far as the instructional technology goes, I, with all due respect for the idea that we are hiring young staff who come in and are tech-savvy, I also think we hire young staff who are tech-savvy, but they aren't street-savvy, so to speak, in terms of how to implement that technology appropriately in the classroom. So many know how to use it, how to benefit from it socially and so forth, but there needs to be an oversight and a real management of how to integrate that on an instructional basis in the classroom, and I think that that, beyond the technology that's in there, hanging from the ceiling or the computers that we have, it's really how do students use the technology, and how can we as a building drive that on an individual and department basis?
Well, the students are the ones who are sometimes teaching the staff.
Well, and I think that that's what we wanted, absolutely, I agree 100%, but I hope that the unique skill set that the persons that we would have as our instructional technology leaders, aren't those students, or aren't the staff who are being taught by the students, quite actually, they're working within departments to move that forward on a unique and individual basis that I, again, have been impressed with, so I think it's one thing that we can do both from a professional development standpoint, when time gets kind of eroded from that on occasion, that we can say, we provide unique and individual professional development opportunities for our first years, our first four-year employees, and is same being true with the support that we would give to people implementing and embedding technology into their instructional strategies, and I think that's the important thing to remember, is that how a teacher uses the technology is more important than just having the technology in the classroom, and that's something that I don't propose to be an expert in, but I know that the unique skill sets of those that we task with that are on the cutting edge of things instructionally, I like to think of it as being future-ready in our classroom, not only for the implementation potentially of one-to-one initiative, but just the strategies of how to use collaborative technology to improve instruction and to improve the communication of teachers with their students, not only in the classroom, but taking that conversation and feedback outside of the classroom as well, which are things that we don't spend enough time doing as a whole building, that can do individually with most persons.
I just want to assure the board that we have had many conversations about instructional technology tents, and we looked at those very carefully between the two buildings, and as we go into an era where we are tripling the amount of technology that we use as instructors, with Performance Plus, with Talent Ed, with all of these tools at our disposal, we just felt that this was not a time when we could afford truly to cut those tents.
Okay, I don't think we're covering any new grounds here, we have not, for Kay and Jennifer and Mike, Kay, Jennifer, and, yep, am I mistaken, it's been so long that you talked, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think this is gonna be the death.
Okay, Mike, Mike is not even here, okay.
Dr. Skoda, I think it's really, I think it's really important for us to move forward to have clear direction in terms of where we need to go.
Exactly. No, no, there's no clear direction.
So, so we presented to the board in January framework that had specific numbers, are those numbers okay, or would you like us to increase the class sizes and come back with new numbers for the 23rd? And if so, what are those numbers?
I'm gonna repeat what I said before, that you should have another scenario where you, I would like to see another scenario where you've looked at classroom sizes in Zell Central, and you go back with that, and as an alternative, and to what we have because of this, because we've added six, and we're gonna add eight more, and it's all this additional money, and it's only in, again, it's only in one pot, and I'm concerned about putting in this permanent overhead, we have money that needs to go into classrooms, classroom improvements, and the capital budget, and if you take it out of here, there's only, and that's gonna be taken out of capital in other areas as well, so I would like to see this scenario, so we have, we get, we have a look at that.
What thinking, Ed, but are the eight content teachers or are they Special Ed?
Let our administration look at that, and it can't be Special Ed, it's not...
Don't we need to go around as board members, and one board member does not dictate what our administrators do?
But first of all, Kay, Mark, the eight additional staff you're getting at Central, are those Special Ed, or are they content teachers or regular Ed?
The regular Ed FTE is, as proposed tonight, is up .3, the remaining FTE are in the mandated section for ELL and Special Ed, and the direct services of our support staff, professors, deans, interventionists, and psychologists. So if I hear Mr. Corcoran speaking, he's proposing that we go back and look at our sectioning in the department areas, the academic areas, where we are up currently .3.
Yes, exactly right.
So then, we need, you need to hold the rest of the floor.
Okay, Jennifer?
You know, I appreciate all of the time that the administration, building principals, assistant principals, department chairs have put into this, you know, it started with the framework that was brought to the board in January, and I thought it was a great framework to, in which to have this conversation, Bruce wanted to do this last year, he made that mention that this has to be a better process, I appreciate this process, I like all of the numbers that we see, you know, I am trusting what the administration says, I am trusting that the, you know, they have looked at this extensively, I am comfortable with what they have recommendation, and I honestly don't want to see any other scenarios.
Well, besides, you know, that, this is just not, it's not just the expenditure, we also have to be cognizant of what monies we are receiving from the taxpayer, and what was asked for, for this coming budget that was going, that would be fulfilling this, our student services, and, and you have the, what was recommended, and what we have to live within, I would like to make, because our CFO is gonna have to make sure that we can live within the revenues that we're getting in, and this, what's been recommended, so if our entire staff is, this is what we're recommending, and I would believe that our CFO is part of this process, am I in error on that? No, the CFO is part of this process, then I am taking the recommendation of our professional support staff, so I don't need to see any other tweaking one student here or there, or maybe classroom 128 can handle 30 students instead of 25, I don't think we need to micromanage like that, I think we need to, we need to, our support staff, we gave them a framework and edict, and they have fulfilled it, thank you very much.
Ed, anything further?
Yeah, I don't appreciate the heckling from the audience when this is going on, so if you guys could control yourself in the first row there. These, I think it's called management, this is what we're asking for, a management scenario, we have a scenario that they presented, and asking for another scenario isn't micromanaging, it's actually management, and I would like to see, I'd like to see another scenario where some of these assumptions that were given a long, long time ago, before we had any results, are relooked at and changed, and I think Bill can appreciate this from his previous jobs, and I'm sure Dominic's been challenged before, unless to look at it, it's not, it's not saying that there's, what you've given is bad, it's just saying, let's look at the other scenario.
Victor?
Yeah, two things, I have no objection to looking at data, I think that that's just common sense, if you can increase, I mean, these numbers are not set in stone, I don't know the importance of the numbers if they move one, one way or another, but if there's room to move a number one way or another, and it makes a meaningful difference, I'd like to hear about that, and if you say to me, we think we can get it done with these slight tweaks, I'd like to hear about that, that's, so I'm with that on that, if you look at it and say, no, I can't come back to the board and adjust these numbers at all, then I would, then I would accept that conclusion from you, but I would just want to make sure you've done that exercise, and the same thing with Tammy, it's what I asked her, just to make sure, I think we all agree, compliance, legal compliance is absolutely necessary, we have to move in that direction, we're always trying to get to perfection, we'll never be in perfection, we'll try to get as close as we can, but just make sure in this budgetary environment, that we're doing what we need to do and not necessarily more. Thank you.
Mrs. Manley?
I would like to see two, if not three, scenarios split up.
I guess we have to look at this realistically, do we want to, is this where we want to save money? If we want to save money, we can increase our class count, to have more classes, tables or chairs or desks can be put into a room, whether that's 30, or 35, or 40, I don't know, but I think we were already decided to reduce our department FTE count, 10 staff members, we've increased our mandated FTE count 4.1, we've increased our direct service FTE count 3.4, we've increased our support service FTE 1.5, we've increased our transition center FTE 1.6, so realistically, we are decreasing some staff members in certain departments, core departments, so I guess what the big question is, do we want to decrease that even more?
Back to polling, is it clear, Ed?
I haven't spoken yet.
Is it, sorry, is that a yes or a...
Okay, Stephanie, you were down, how many academic teachers at South, roughly?
Then, what am I saying? Down 4.9 or so?
No, I actually just... What's that?
Which doesn't translate with teachers, when you look at FTE.
If you include only the cuts at Central, you don't factor in the adds as well, the cuts...
It's south.
Sorry, at South, at South, 12.1, Stephanie reduced 12.1 in FTE alone.
And Mark, you are up .3 at Central.
In the instructional department, .3.
I, it makes no, it makes no sense to me to be tweaking .3.
Stephanie's cuts at South were not all in the department, not all in the classroom, all in, 12.1 is what they cut out of South.
It says on here, South's department FTE cut is 10.3.
If you factor in the .4, it's 10.3, so really, she cut 9.9, so 10.
Okay, again, let's cut to the chase here, last year, this board spent months looking at Central, and came up with 16.2 new teachers, the enrollment at Central is up a little bit, from last year, right?
Flat.
Okay, it's flat.
Last year to this year up, predicted this year to next were flat.
Last year to this year up, predicted this year to next were flat.
Okay.
With not factoring in the potential move-ins or enrollings from private schools that we don't currently have tallied in to our sections.
Therefore, the way I look at it, Central basically is flat with point three. That's basically flat. You're just splitting hairs. I can't see the administration going through gyrations. I was a teacher. I was in the building. And if you get rid of a teacher or two, I don't know. My concern, Mark is only increasing things by point three. Stephanie is down quite a bit. The bulk of this is with Tammy. I think that is the area that really needs to be justified, that there's no other way of doing it. Mark's only adding point three. Stephanie's losing. So I don't, myself, I agree with Jennifer, Kay and Mike. I don't want the regular ed classes beat up on. What we have to fine tune is with special ed.
Just to clarify, the special ed increase instructional at Central isn't general education classrooms. It's for co-talk classes, not self-contained programming.
Okay, so the point three is really co...
Under the mandated is the increase there 3.4, that's all in general education co-talk classrooms.
It's all in general ed.
That is correct.
Okay, but whoa, 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 if it's a co-talk classroom, that is special ed, right?
It's the 70-30 classroom, co-talk.
That's the point of looking at it, a higher, a higher classroom size because we'll have more co-talk classes. A lot more co-talk. For FTE signs, five plus definitely extra classes. Can you put your mic on, please?
The... Wait, we broke, we broke out special ed in terms of the special ed FTE in the classroom completely separate from the department. The increase in the special ed general education population was up 2.8 at Central. Where? The department FTE does not include special ed. So Central is up point three. The special ed FTE, under mandated FTE is up 2.8. So there's still point three at Central. In the departments.
Okay. I'm afraid that our next meeting, we're going to spend two hours still. You know, as I said before, all night from the beginning, I don't want general ed messed with where we're at here. And what we have to do to get in compliance with, I would like Tammy to look at, are there other ways we can be in compliance without adding extra staff? And...
That's the tallying that they did for the 2.8. That's how they arrived at based on IEPs and enrollment of classrooms in order to stay in compliance. That's how many more he would need to be in compliance. And we actually did it higher than 30% knowing that there would be move-ins. So they're actually staffing about 36 to 38% IEPs currently in those co-talk classrooms.
They're out of compliance.
Okay, I...
Just looking at the scenarios.
How, how much? Tell me under what scenario Mark should get two or three less teachers at Central?
You asking me?
No.
Are you asking me?
Right.
I don't know. He should run, they should run the numbers and look at it and see what the, they're going to, they're going to run a scenario where they said, okay, if you, if you increase the class size by, by two, how does that, how does that impact? You know, how does it impact these overall class sizes?
Why did we give him 6.2 last year when the principal only wanted two? Last year, the principal said two. We looked at the numbers and says, no, this is too crowded. We don't like it. We're getting 6.2. So what we're really saying right now is we want to take back some of that 6.2. So what we're really saying again is we made a mistake by giving the 6.2 and I don't think we did. So I'm opposed to any new assumptions and all I want is from Tammy to get special ed in the compliance. And obviously we have to do what we have to do with compliance. But this is, you know, especially for Stephanie here, this has been pleasant and I don't think for Mark either.
Well, one thing that we will be bringing back at 2030, it won't look just like this because we're still working through residency issues. And I, I think we could all agree that one of the things that we've heard is that there, we need to continue to scrub, scrub these things, scrub these sections to see, you know, to make absolutely sure that we are as responsibly, start stepping as responsibly as we, as we can. So when we bring this back to 2030, it will, it will be a little different from this because we're going to have some residency issues that are going to be resolved and we'll have other moving parts. So when we bring it back, it will be, it will be slightly different from this.
And the other thing we have to be cognizant of is some of the kids who are in residency purgatory right now are going to actually become students. And also, we may be having a few additional students that come across the goal line. And, and so I think the whole board would agree with this, Bruce, that what the work you've done is scrub it. And, you know, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I told Dr. Law at the beginning that he was to come to the board with a staffing plan that was academically justified. And he was not going in there and saying we need to save 200,000 or 300,000. And I don't think it's a fruitful exercise to try to find one or two teachers to cut when it doesn't look like we do. And I go back to this. Did we make a mistake by giving Central 6.2 teachers last year? I don't think we did. And if we take away a teacher or two from Central, what we're saying is we did make a mistake. Okay, you got your direction there, Bruce?
So we'll continue, yeah, we'll continue to look at this and we will also bring back, Tammy will bring back citations and something that will indicate what we're doing in special ed for compliance. Am I hearing that correctly?
Right, yeah.
But, but we're not bringing back two or three scenarios. That's, that's...
Oh, you got a majority.
And to Claudia's point, had we been up to snuff in earlier years, we would have added these additional staff years ago. Okay, we're ready for the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gallo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gassini. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, please. Can you just talk about Global Glimpse? Yeah, Global Glimpse, tell us what that is, please. A little more detail. I was a little unclear on exactly what it was going to do.
Sure.
We actually were selected as Hinsdale South amongst 300 applicants, high schools in the state. There were several of us selected for a cultural exchange opportunity for students who would choose to do so. Our teachers would be chaperoning and our students would work with the Global Glimpse program all through next school year to learn about the cultures and to also raise money for their trip and spend a significant amount of time in South American countries that would allow them to truly understand the culture. We just are really excited about this opportunity and to partner with this program. Again, it's a, an opportunity, there are scholarships for students who are financially needy, plus the whole program of raising funds to subsidize their trip. Their trip would be virtually paid for if they were in financial need.
Is it a, is it starting a club or is it just in a more of an exchange program?
No, it's more of an exchange program, yeah.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that we're not in, they're still analyzing our evaluation and we won't know until the end of June. Is that correct?
Right, but we need your nod to further the program at this point. So that's why we bring it to you now. Students wouldn't travel until a year from summer, so...
But we might not be accepted.
If you give the nod, we're, we're really very positive and down the road, yes.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and the reason we're bringing this because Claudia 6242 requires us to, okay, because it's not just good news, I mean, it could be a good news item as well, that 6242 requires us to, if I can phrase this word.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Already done.
We already did that?
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful.
Roll call.
Okay, ready for a roll call.
Mr. Gassini.
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran.
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn.
Aye.
Mrs. Gallo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pansen.
Aye.
Dr. Skoda.
Aye.
Ms. Manley.
Aye.
Any new or old business? Fearing none?
No, hold on, I've got.
Hope it's good for us.
Oh, yeah, well, some of it is and some of it isn't. In terms of legislation that's pending in Springfield, a representative or, sorry, Senator out of Glen Carbon Illinois, which is downstate, has filed legislation requiring districts to get a court order before accessing a student's social networking password as opposed to being able to simply get it now. So there's a amendment pending out there, Senate bill. Then there's also two bills on PE that are pending. One is that PE will be left to local control and it will no longer be mandated by the state. Second one, if there are two or more AP classes, the student can waive PE. And I've personally had complaints from various people who signed up for functional teams who have been cut out of the process. And that needs to stop, so...
Claudia.
What?
What does cut out of the process mean?
Means they're not being notified about meeting dates when they should be or they're on the list and they're not being notified.
Was anybody at the administration notified of that by them or you?
No.
Yeah, there, there, people at the administration were notified when there, when there was any hiccups, at least that I know of, because people did mention something and what...
I don't think it's inevitable that anybody's being kept out.
It went, it went right to, I sent a rate, any issues I sent a rate to Bruce and then Jeff Hawk from Arcans. But it's, what Claudia says is true, some people that thought that signed up didn't get information. But it's a bit of a complicated coordination right now. So it's beginning.
Yeah, by all means, let us know. Because we, we, we would like, we want to fix that. So please let us know.
And regarding PE, the district already has the authority by state statute to exempt, exempt kids who need classes to graduate or classes getting to a college. So whether this bill passes or not, we could do that right now and our boards have chosen not to. And for the other thing, kind of a trivia question, there's only two states in the United States that require PE. Illinois is one of them. I don't know which, which is the other. Okay, anybody else? Okay, ready for audience communication? Mr. George Logan.
I'd like to finish what I said earlier. We need 10,300 for our April 15 letter to the homeowners. And I appreciate that it was passed, but I'd like a chance to see if I could get three more members to agree. We can't tell. And I know nobody in this board would want to tell homeowners that we can't afford money, which represents 1/100 of 1% of the 93 million that the tax homeowners contribute to this school. I know nobody wants that job, no more than they want to tell the swim team that just won, that we can't have a new pool. Suppose for one moment that the PR department says we need 200,000 for fiscal year 2016, focused on this very important group, which is our homeowners. If they say that, this is only 2/10ths of 1% of the 93 million that they contribute. So what I guess I'm asking the people who don't support it is that this is a very, very important, nobody's more important at this moment with our finances, with the state the way it is, with Senate Bill 16 there, with the fact that they could reduce the money to us, to our school. Nobody, they're, they're going to play a huge role. And we need to get the taxpayers, the homeowners in this district on our side. We don't want people fearing, you know, they go out for a referendum that it's going to be, you know, a negative thing. We need to get them on our side. So a $200,000 or $300,000 program to get our taxpayers on our side is not too much when you look at the percent that we're spending and that they're contributing, you know, for the teachers and for the school. I think it's something we should do. Is there anybody got any questions about the proposal, the financial numbers that I've given or the assumptions or the logic behind it?
Mr. Logan, let me ask you a question. Do you get a regular newsletter from your elementary district?
Yes.
Okay.
And have, and have for years.
And have you ever, have you ever gotten one from District 86 outside of what the summer negotiations?
Well, I can go on the website, but the, the taxpayers have already said they don't, they don't visit the website. And if we invited them in here now, most of them wouldn't be here. So what we have to do is get them on our side. We got to reach out to them because right now they, they understand only the referendum. And what we need to do is get them much more involved with the decisions that this board's going to be making, especially in this economic climate that we live in.
And I was over the weekend doing a little unofficial research and roughly 25% of the people I talked to do not know what high school district they were in.
I think one of the board members brought it out. They don't know if there's one or two high schools in the, in the district. They don't know Central and South or, there's, there's a lot of them that are that way. They can hardly name a board member. They might, yours might be the one they remember because of your long, long journey in here. But most of the time, the board members, they don't know a board member. Now, I'm not saying nobody, but I'm saying a large bulk of them might not know.
George, that's only because you go around bad mouthing me. But anyway, thank you.
So there's no questions then about it? I hope I, I hope I get three people who might at least reconsider. Because seven of you behind us would be helpful.
I will reconsider, as was said, that I would, you know, put it in the budget for next year, absolutely.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I knew Bruce would...
That's what we all said, to put it in the budget. Not for this time, but to put in the budget.
But even, even this 10,000 that we're asking, 10,300 is so small. And we have this referendum coming up as well as voting for our members and just to orient them about what we're doing would be, would be very helpful, I think. And I hope you might think the same.
Thank you, Brooke.
Okay.
Uh, anybody else? We have a gentleman in the back. Please identify yourself and your town.
A town? Roger Kempa from the city of Darien. A wonderfully nice place to live. First, I have to compliment you up. There goes my three minutes ready. On your sign there, are you getting revenue from office depot and sales management for getting their name up there?
We got the timer for free, though.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I, I heard the subject of the, I'm trying to get this done fast, but if there's time, I wanted to commend the board on something too. So maybe that's an incentive. Regarding the $10,000, I too, I get a monthly newsletter from the elementary district. I get twice a year from the park district and, you know, so... But I was going to say, I was talking about the tax levy. And in December of '12, I had read in the local newspaper that District 86 Board was about to vote on increasing the tax levy 4.5% or $3.2 million. So I went to that board meeting to state that taxpayers were still in harsh economic times and to just ask a simple question, why do you need $3.2 million? And the response back then from the board majority, other than the two board members, I would later learn to be Dr. Skoda and Ms. Diane Burrit, was one of the... I would later learn to be Dr. Skoda and Ms. Diane Barrett, was an arrogant, aloofness, negative attitude, kind of like, how, how dare you come to our board meeting and ask that? And I was told that the action was legal, given all the reply to my simple question. And the action of the board majority at that time, which includes present board members, Jennifer Planson, Michael Coon, and Kate Gallo, was meant not to leave any dollars on the table, despite harsh economic conditions people are suffering, still are. Today, the tax levies handled in a much differently, in a positive way. There was a review of the levy before the actual tax levy in December now. And before it gets voted on December. Now the public can ask questions, get answers in a positive board public environment. It may not be pretty and sedate, as we know, but here exists the opportunity for all to disagree, agree, comment, ask questions, and get answers before the tax levy is approved in December. And then my question is, does anyone want to really go backwards and do things the old way in handling the tax levy like I incurred of December of 2012? And there might be other people like me, and they'll be stuffed with them showing up at board meetings, you know? So I don't think so.
Okay, thank you, Roger. I assume that's a rhetorical question, which means we don't have to answer it, right?
Can I commend the board?
Please.
Sure.
As you know, there, there is a little problem with the college page, but that you, all of you run this board and board meeting so well compared to the way they do. It's a little, take little things, like they did not have an American flag there, and they did not have on the agenda pledged allegiance. And for the public, they provided seating of like six chairs. And now, and also five standing armed police officers. So, and at the last meeting, where there was about 400 people, they had 11 police officers armed and ready to go. Somebody said there might be a SWAT team up in the balcony there, but anyway, you don't need the policemen here, so, but I just thought I'd mention that. And there, you know, board members don't talk to each other in silence. They don't answer questions from the audience. So I see, I see this as a good thing, you know? You always say, or you just disagree, agree, but you could talk to each other, and the audience, you answer their questions in general. So that's a commendation.
But there's a downside. Unlike Dr. Bruder, he won't even take us to the cafeteria for our lunch.
Uh, well, yeah. But maybe he'll take you to the water.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, we are going to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, collective bargaining and deliberations concerning salaries for one or more classes of employees, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees, the placement of individual students in special ed programs, and other matters related to individual students. Do we have?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cassini. Second by Mr. Corcoran.
Dr. Skoda, I will not be staying for closed session because I'm still battling walking pneumonia.
I'm sorry to hear that, Kate, thank you. Roll call, please, Kim.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Gallo?
Aye.
Mrs. Planson?
Aye.
Dr. Skoda?
Aye.
Ms. Manley?
Aye.
Mr. Cassini?
Aye.
Mr. Corcoran?
Aye.
Okay, let's take a little three or four minute break.
Now we're aye.
Now we're out, now.
Okay, everybody voted in favor. Motion by Jennifer, and second by Claudia. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.